Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Meeting, November 6, 2024. If you join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I have none.
The agenda will stand as approved. Constituent time, is there anybody in the room that would like to address the board?
Sure.
Okay, if you state your name and address for the record.
Kick this microphone on so you can be reported for posterity, because I have a very soft voice. My name is Myron Andery. I live at 14556 G Road, and my wife is here as well. But we saw on the agenda that appears to be that you'll be talking about the G Road situation later today, which is awesome. Really appreciate that. I know it's taken a lot of your time. I just have one comment that I'd like to add, that if indeed we're looking to reduce the speed, I would like to ask that the commissioners consider the lower, I guess what we would call it, the south end of G Road between the town and Sawmill Mesa Road, that at the minimum that that section become all at least no more than 30 miles an hour. Reason I say that is we have a driveway that comes right along the FL lateral, which is the irrigation ditch, which is also the high point of G Road. And when you come out that driveway, you can't really see to the left. The road is set up, and anything faster than 30 miles an hour is incredibly dangerous. And even though it's supposedly 30 now, there's a sign that says 40 that's only 100 yards down, and then it reduces, but nobody sees the 30 mile an hour sign. So the speed over the FL lateral, as any law enforcement person will tell you that sits there, can obviously be 50 miles an hour, and it's just really super dangerous. So if we could start that 30 mile an hour much farther, all the way to where Sawmill Mesa is, which is where the G-50 road is, I've been thinking about this many times, walk that area. So that's my request, I would say. If you really take a look at that, it's lowering the speeds as much as possible through the whole program, but certainly extending that 30 mile an hour farther down to what would be the north. Think about that, because that FL lateral hill is where we expect, well, not where we expect, where we constantly see credible danger. Fortunately, no one's been hurt here, but it won't be that way forever. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
So I'd like to add to that. My name's Jeanne Andery. Live at the same address, 14556 G Road. And what I'd like to add to that is what we see from our vantage point, because we have a large view from our, on top of the hill there, is, and we've spoken to you guys before about the semis, and we appreciate that the sign went up, no semis, but I don't think that's being addressed by the semi drivers, because the enormity of semis that go down that road is pretty stunning. The reason I mention that is if the speed limit was lowered to 30, then hopefully Google would not be sending people down that road. Also, not only semis, but commuter traffic that think that that's the shortcut, which literally is not a shortcut, but Google is sending people, and we have spoken about that. So that's my other comment is if the speed limit is lowered, then potentially people would not be routed in that direction. Yesterday, the size of the semi that almost cut me off was, I don't even know how long it was. I was trying to take pictures of it, but I couldn't in one frame. It was so big. It's really dangerous, and we really appreciate what has been done so far, but we feel that more needs to be done with the speed limit to lower it significantly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody on the computer?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll continue with our agenda then. Thank you for your comments. County Clerk Terry Stevenson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have the words for the October 15, 2024, VOCC regular meeting. Are there any additions, changes, or deletions? Thank you. My next item is for your consideration with the chairman's signature on the Electronic Recording Technology Board grant agreement. I will remind you that we received a grant for replacing our electronic filing system. That grant is in the amount of $145,735. This agreement would be due to the ERTB Board and the Colorado Department, or the Colorado Department of State and Delta County. This document would be a DocuSign document that I just need your approval so that I can send them that information, and they can send it to Chairman Lang.
I'll move that the board approve and authorize the chairman to sign the grant award letter with the Electronic Recording Technology Board and Delta County for the amount of $145,735. Second.
A motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so done.
Good luck, Terry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That would be a great improvement. And so I'm going to give you a little bit of our election update we did. There's so many people that was involved in this election. We tried to make sure we had everything covered. It was a community effort to get this election conducted this year. We had a few bumps in the road that were of no fault of ours, but I want to thank especially my staff and the election judges that participated in this election. They did an amazing job. I'd also like to thank our law enforcement agencies throughout the county. They beat up their patrol on our drop boxes. They were there for us last night for when our polls closed. We had security walk through the building. Jesse stayed late until all our transport judges got there and made sure that they had all made it and were able to get into the building. Everybody just really stepped up. We had community members bringing coffee, bringing breakfast burritos. It was just an amazing, you know, people really supported our office, and it was much needed and appreciated. So, and I'd like to thank the board too for all your support that you guys do. You've gotten some fan mail, and you know, I apologize for that, but we worked through all of that just fine. But yeah, we did have a very successful election. We actually had 18,584 mail-in ballots. We had 1,320 people vote in person while the VSPCs were open. So at this point, we have a total of 19,904 total votes that have come in. Now, that may change, because that includes the rejects, the signature discrepancies that we had, which this year was immensely. We had 345 signature discrepancies. So a majority of those have gotten cured, but there's still some out there. And we may see, if they do not cure, we may see that 82% return drop just a little bit. So don't be alarmed. We have approximately 200 ballots left. My judges were just could not process anymore. We have to let them go at some point. There are only 240 of those which need to be duplicated, because there was some problems with the scanning of those particular ballots, but everything went well, and we had no bumps in the road as far as yesterday. So again, I'd like to thank my staff for making it an easy process. Do you guys have any questions?
So of the 24,000 roughly active voters, you had an 82%. That's pretty amazing.
Yeah, because they, and the amazing part is my staff, in a two-day period, they processed 5,154 ballots. So that was a lot Monday and Tuesday to process. And so when certain time hit last night, we just, we could not go any further. We had to let those judges get somewhere else. So yeah, so that was an amazing turnout. We're very pleased, very pleased. Drop boxes were very active, but everything is pretty much the same as it was in 2020. The numbers were the same, in-person voting, that type of thing. The only difference was those signatures were quite a bit. Not sure why, just did not manage. So we are making sure, and people are curing them. So they did actually vote those ballots. We haven't found anything at this point that needs to be turned over.
Okay, very good.
We'll knock on whether it continues to be that.
Sure. I do have a question. So I did the drop-off, and I got an email acknowledging that my ballot was accepted and counted. But my husband didn't get that same thing. Why? How did, where does the email?
He signed up for the ballot tracks that you're signed up for?
I didn't know that I was signed up for it.
At some point, you probably signed up for ballot tracks, and that's what sends you those messages. And so you can go on, on our website, and sign up for that, and he'll also get those messages.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Terry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I would love to know how the new VSPs that are in, which goes on.
It was amazing. It worked out very, very well. I would think that we're going to try to do it for our elections. It's much more real. Yeah, yeah. Maybe not every election, but I think definitely for our general elections, that is, it worked out very well. I think our theme was much better. It was easier to set up. People, it was just an easier flow. Our office is just too small to have elections in. So yeah, it worked out unanimously.
How many in-person voters were there?
We had 1,320. Which is down about 37 votes from 2020.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that information. Again, Elliot Crew, thank you for staying up, and I'm sure all the election judges are younger-aged people, and they don't like it.
They do an amazing job.
Great. Tell them thank you for us.
I will do that. Thank you.
You bet. Next up is Commissioner Business, Board's Consideration of a Resolution for Speed Limit Changes on Portions of G Road, G-50 Road, and Sawmill Mesa Road. This is in our area, and two people here spoke to the speed limit on G Road to be reduced. There's a lot more traffic in that area, commuters. Why they would want to use that small country road rather than a nice four-lane highway is kind of interesting. There's a lot of people who watch for the sandhill cranes down there and take pictures of them. There's not a lot of parking along that road. We put up signs for the semis to not use that road. But if you're a semi driver going coast to coast, and whatever apparatus your trucking company uses to direct you from point A to point B, and if that apparatus says, "Take a right," well, you better take a right. And because their company has bonuses for less mileage and time and everything, because that means money for the trucking company, and that's probably why some of the semis aren't adhering to the sign, no semis, and they could just flat miss it. And, but it's been an issue for a while. We tried different things. The semi signs, we even have a sign there at the Ungar Bogri Bridge that the road is closed through traffic. That didn't help. I've seen out-of-state Corvettes going on that country road rather than down on a four-lane highway, which is interesting. A lot of people live on that road. The commuter traffic is getting more and more, and we have it planned down probably next year to redo the intersection at G Road, G-50 Road, Sawmill Mesa Road. We're not going to make it a roundabout, even though some people wanted it. No, not really. But we are going to try to acquire some more land from the landowner, make it more of a T-intersection rather than a Y, put three stop signs up there on that. But this resolution, and this what we discussed today, is the lowering of the speed limit on the road. And
You want to let the sheriff address that, since we got the recommendation from the sheriff's office on that?
You betcha. Sheriff Taylor, you give us some words of wisdom, we'd appreciate it.
I don't know about that.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Yeah, so Deputy Granger conducted a road survey for that section of road out on Sawmill, G Road and G-50 Road. And, you know, I think he did a pretty thorough survey and gave some suggestions for the board to look at. I would agree with his assessment on speeds and what he put into his survey.
Okay. And with helping, when we get the intersection completed, stop signs being there, that might force some people to go on the four-lane rather than having to stop coming in, going. And that one, we have the speed limit at 40 miles an hour and down to 30. G Road from Gunnison River Bridge to Deer Run Road will be changed to 40 miles an hour in both directions. Portion of G-50 Road from the Highway 50 to the Gunnison River shall be changed to 40 miles an hour in both directions. Portions of Sawmill Mesa Road to remain or be changed to, the westbound lane will be 50 miles an hour, 600 feet west of G and Sawmill Mesa Road, intersection and continuing until changed by an official traffic control device. The eastbound lane will be 40 miles an hour, 600 feet west of the G and Sawmill Mesa intersection and continuing until the termination of Sawmill Mesa at the intersection G Road, Sawmill Mesa Road. So that is what we have resolution. Like to try it at 40 miles an hour. If it doesn't, we can always revisit it. But once we get that intersection down there, that should make a big difference also.
And once again, Google does not base it off of what the speed limit is. Google bases it off of how fast traffic travels through there. There's this GPS setup in there, in the way Google operates. This is something we just learned we weren't aware of. Google bases it off of the speed of traffic, and if we slow that traffic down, then Google will automatically change that, because that traffic slows down and starts pushing around the other way. So, and this is the recommendation of our law enforcement agency, and they are the ones that have to enforce this. And they are the, basically the experts in the field that we need to rely on to make this determination.
And this will be resolution number 24, is what I have.
I move the board approved resolution 2024, R24, a resolution for speed limit changes on the portions of G Road, G-50 Road, and Sawmill Mesa Road. I'll second.
Motion second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so done. Thank you.
I have a question real quick. When will this resolution go into effect, and when will signage be placed out there?
That will get with Scott, and it'll be in the near future.
It's adopted today, so as soon as they get signage up, then it'll go into effect.
I think the key for this is going to be public relation, get the word out about what the changes are.
I think, yeah, today, we can talk about releasing this. I think that may not be this resolution.
And we probably need to get those signs moved from where they are and get them put out there on the near the road, talking about the difference in speed limit.
The electronic sign is notifying the traveling public about the reduced speed.
Make sure, if you would, make sure Chris gets that information so we can post it on our Facebook page.
Sheriff, I think that will really help Deer Run Road, which is now still 40, which is unfortunate, but appreciate your vote, because if a sign said, "Reduce speed ahead," psychologically, what's happening is there's a speed limit sign right there that says 40. And people see it, and then they don't look at the 30 ahead, because they're already mentally going 40, and they think they're doing okay. And that's where they cross that lateral pumping it. They have a sign that was telling them to reduce the speed. Those help, you know?
Yeah. I agree.
Okay.
So let them know that they've got a slower speed ahead, something that gets their mind off. They see 40, and they're going 40, and that's it. And then they cross that lateral going 40, and had it way too fast.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Drive careful.
We do.
Next up is Board's Consideration of the 2025 Delta County Holiday Schedule.
This is very similar to the schedule that you approved for 2024. Particularly, the number of days stays the same. Lindsay was very kind to build the actual document and to push for this to happen earlier in the year versus the first of the year when this is normally done. So Lindsay, I appreciate that. And again, nothing significantly has changed from 2024. But this is for your decision and discussion.
I just can't believe it's almost 2025.
Exactly.
Especially when you can remember 1965.
We can.
I was going to let that one go. We have to officially adopt this?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I move the board approve the 2025 holiday calendar for Delta County as presented. Second.
Motion second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so done. Thank you. Next, we have to review our VOCC schedule.
So after this meeting, I show you have one Delta County Annual Meeting on Friday, November 8. Monday, November 11 is Veterans Day. Our administration offices will be closed. On November 12, at 10:00 a.m., Commissioner's Budget for Meetings here at 560 Dodge.
And on that day, we were going to meet with the Veteran Administration.
State Director. Yeah, State Director.
Is that an individual or a group meeting, or do we know?
It's a, he wants to visit with all three of you.
Do we have a time yet on that? I got 2 o'clock written down.
Yeah.
The Veterans Paris.
Thank you.
It'll be here.
November, Friday, November 12, Tuesday. November 19, our Board of County Commissioners regular scheduled meeting, 8:30 a.m. here at 560 Dodge.
On the 14th, 1 o'clock, we have a Gunnison Valley Transportation Planning Meeting. That's also the Montrose Water Summit. I was going to go to that too. Okay. I didn't know if anybody else was. Okay.
I just put it up on the ICA calendar that are
Well, I don't know where you guys, either one of you guys plan on hitting the TPR meeting? If you're at the Water Summit.
TPR.
Okay. Yeah, put the TPR down.
November 19, UAW meeting. November 19, the Board of Health meeting at 3:30. November 28, Thanksgiving, the Delta County offices will be closed. The day after Thanksgiving, Delta County offices will be closed. And that rounds out our November.
Okay.
While we're talking, the first week of December, that will be CCI Winter Conference, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. So we will have to move our commissioner meeting there.
So we had originally, or what we have posted legally on the budget notice is 8:30 a.m. on December 6 to adopt the 2025 budget. Do you want to have your VOCC meeting that morning, or do you want to wait for the 10th?
I'm flexible.
What works for you, Robbie?
Either one, so.
Want to do it Friday then?
You'll be at CCI also, just coming back.
Right.
Does that give you enough time?
Yeah, well, we can get most things done via email, so.
So we're going to go ahead and do a VOCC meeting on the 6th?
Right, if that, you guys are good with.
So we're going to consider that regular meeting then?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will be also adopting the budget that day, correct?
You know, actually, could we move that to the 10th? I just see, I've got some other meetings stacking up Friday the 6th. Does that hurt you guys? But we've still, we've got the budget scheduled for that Friday. That was in our documents. Could we do that? Sorry about that, gentlemen.
I'll go ahead and read the jail report for Sunday, October 27, 2024. Delta County Detention Facility Population Count Report, male inmates, county jail, 33; female inmates, county jail, 4; male inmates, Department of Corrections, 4; female inmates, Department of Corrections, 2, for a total of 43. Average daily inmate population for the week of 10/21/24 through 10/27/24 was 50.80. And at 9 o'clock, we have the county attorney. And it is 8:59, so we just as well slide into that. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Okay. And first up, we have an assignment of a lease, Hangar 240. Hangar two forty-five.
Correct.
Okay.
And this one is a straightforward assignment of lease for North Fork Valley. From Van Gondtar to Fialkowitz.
I sure hope that lease is a lot more legible than, uh, the copy we got than our, uh.
Eighties, I promise.
Okay.
It is, the scan does not come through clear, but our copy is better, um, it's legible to be able to read, but we know that the plain copy is not ideal.
All right. What's the remaining term on this lease?
It is good through December thirty-first of twenty thirty-two. Eight years.
I'll move the board approve the assignment of lease regarding hangar number two four five at North Fork Valley Airport from Bangatar to Fialkowitz. A second.
Motion is second on the floor, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so done. Go ahead.
Oh, I didn't know you needed to announce, the next one's for hangar one ninety-five at Blakefield, um, for Nottingham. Now, this will be a new lease for an existing hangar located at Blakefield. This lease replaces the existing lease that's been in effect for twenty-five years. Um, just some information, the hangar was built in nineteen ninety-nine and the engineering department has inspected it and has determined that it is in good condition. The existing lease technically has one year left, but because the hangar is being sold from Rob Hunker to Brett Nottingham, it does make sense to go ahead and create a new lease now rather than do an assignment and then renew it as well. Um, there's notice of age from the new owner, since the lease term is extended one additional year, which is noted in paragraph three. And the rank amount is kept at the current rate for the calendar year twenty point five, which is also in paragraph thirty-three.
Okay.
Well, I'll move that the board approve the, uh, airport ground lease for Blakefield, hangar number one ninety-five, uh, for Nottingham and authorize the chairman to sign. Second.
Motion is second on the floor, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Sheriff.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is ten o'clock for planning, so we'll adjourn until ten o'clock. Okay, welcome back, it's ten o'clock. Now on our agenda, we have a couple items from planning and we'll turn it over to the planning department for their presentation.
Thank you. All right, uh, so we have two items on the agenda today, so the first, uh, application before you this morning is project number twenty-four dash twenty-six, Creteini. This is for consideration of a preliminary subdivision in the eight twenty zoning district. Property is located on the west side of Crawford Road in Pay. All right. And parcel consists of thirty-six acres, which has been zoned eight twenty per the two thousand twenty-four land use code. The applicant, applicant is proposing a three lot subdivision, which is preliminary plat that requires recommendation from the P C to the Board of County Commissioners, who are the final decision making body. Access is existing from Crawford Road, uh, new shared access is proposed for lots two and three. Domestic water exists on the parcel for all three lots, there is a bone mesa of water tap assigned to lot one. Lot two is served by the road spring number three and lot three has a domestic well. The property has ten shares of the Minnesota ditch. As stated on the plat, the irrigation shares will be assigned as follows. Lots one, two share, two shares, lot two, four shares, and lot three, four shares. Lot one has an existing O W T S permit and there is currently no O W T S installed on lots two and three. And they are new proposed lots. Here's the vicinity map, and the site is located on the west side of Crawford Road and is approximately three point three eight, eight miles southwest of the town of Peonies. The parcel has been zoned eight twenty, the subject parcel is surrounded by properties that have been zoned eight twenty with acreages ranging in from two acres to forty-one point sixty acres. The parcel is also surrounded by properties that have been zoned eight thirty-five with acreages ranging from ten eight, ten point zero three acres to two hundred and sixty-three acres. Here's the preliminary plat, um, for the proposed subdivision, the lots have been color coded accordingly. Lot one is fully developed, um, with a residential lot with all utilities installed, including domestic water. Lot two is vacant residential add slash egg lot. Domestic water will be served by the road spring number three. Lot three is a vacant residential slash egg lot. Domestic water will be served by a domestic well. The hatched orange area to the east of the property is the road dedication to be deeded to the South County or Crawford Road. The hatched red area adjacent to the orange is previous road dedication that was deeded to Delta County for Crawford Road. The pink area arrows is where existing access for lot one is located. The hatched purple line is the proposed shared access easement for lots two and three. And lastly, the yellow star is the location of the road spring number three. The staff has recommended ten conditions, which are included in the staff report. The conditions include, but are not limited to, all existing and proposed easements and encumbrance, including access shall be shown on the final plat. Group of water purchase, uh, plat notes, access permits, traffic impact studies and final plat fees. The planning commission added three conditions to include building envelopes for lots two and three. Wetlands to be shown on the plat and, uh, concerns of the irrigation pipeline that is believed to be located where the proposed access for lots two and three. However, staff feels that condition number eleven, uh, building envelopes for lots two and three should be removed as the subdivision meets all required standards of the land use code. Uh, so again, here are the, some of the recommended conditions. So with that, uh, staff recommends, um, that the B O C C adopt the resolution. Project number twenty-four dash zero two six complies with all applicable standards for preliminary plat subdividing a thirty-six acres into three lots in the eight twenty zoning designation, uh, conditionally approved with three lot subdivisions for preliminary plats. And that concludes my presentation and the Creteinis are here if you have one.
Okay. If there anything that, uh, the Creteinis would like to add, you can come up to the microphone there and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, sure. My name is Stefano Creteini. That's Tessa Creteini, we live on the property in question. And as far as adding, uh, we, we drafted up that letter where, where we put our opinions and, uh, addressed some of the concerns from last meeting. So is there anything specific, I feel, we feel pretty adequate with that response.
I had no questions for him.
No, no.
Just want to make sure you understand that the dedication of the road easement, um, is pretty normal for Delta County in these, in these situations as we try to, um, get all our roads standardized.
Right.
Okay.
It, and I guess that brings up a question, I'm glad you brought that up, is, so I think the easement is for fifty feet from the road as, as it's designated, and that brings us within fourteen feet of the existing house. We were, uh, hoping to get that reduced to thirty feet and that would still give from the center of the road, uh, thirty feet.
Brittany, Sean, your thoughts on this?
So typically, we don't do that, what I've seen in the past is if a building encroaches on the new right of way, there's a, there's a statement that we typically put on that if a certain percentage of the building is destroyed, it cannot be rebuilt in that right of way. But typically, we don't reduce for that kind of thing. If it's not already in there, then we, we wouldn't.
Okay. Duly noted, thank you.
Uh, we have other members of the audience, would you like to address the board? And we'll give you a chance to rebut i- if there need to be.
Thank you. We'll give us one.
Yeah, you can go ahead and, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, um, I'm Kay Hannah and I live at one one five eight nine Crawford Road, which is directly to the north of what would be lot three. And I'm kind of opposed to the approving the subdivision as it exists because it firmly places all the adverse impacts of noise and light pollution, et cetera, on the neighbors rather than on the sellers. And it also, um, it doesn't really protect the rural community, we have a, a situation where we have shared irrigation water between the property we're talking about and ourselves and the Gillan Waters to the west of us, and it's twenty-five shares that flows from, comes across the road kind of at the the middle of lot one and then down through buried pipe and it's, you know, old and inadequate for real traffic, so the having a, a, two households worth of access across it, I think would, would become a problem. Um, let's see, what else? The existing irrigation system, I wonder about the domestic water in that, uh, the water for lot two is located on lot one, how does that really work? And also the well, I, I sort of wonder about the quantity and quality of input, whether that is going to be adequate for a household, so I think that these things need to be addressed. One solution, and there's, oh, let's see, continuing with the irrigation water notion, the way that it's been historically and currently divided up among the three people on this, on our side of the road is that the, the subject property has ten shares, we have five, and the Gillan Waters have ten, and the way it's done is that, you know, the ten share properties get six days and we get three. And so if they were to divvy up the ten shares and split it up, there would be some, need to be some provision for the, the schedule remaining as it is and that, you know, maybe they would just timeshare among themselves or something. There's just a lot of kind of things that are left hanging. And I feel like, you know, that these, you know, the Creteinis want to, uh, you know, sell the property to make money, but I feel that they are not taking into account, you know, that, that, that it's part of a, a part of a neighborhood, a part of a shared thing. Also, on, on lot three, there's the beginning of a wetlands that's year round and spring fed that then flows into an adjudicated spring on our property and our stock and irrigation ponds and then on down and so forth, and so I would, uh, I, part of the building envelope that the planning commission suggested would be to address protecting that wetlands from potential contamination by any septic system that a house would obviously need to have. Um, let's see. Oh, and, um, as far as I was reading in the what was posted online, that the desirable ag land is on lot one. But actually, all those springs make it a little boggy and historically and currently, the most desirable and used irrigated agricultural land is, in fact, lot three. That's where the, you know, that's pain and grazing and, and the irrigation system works, you know, that's how it's set up right now. And particularly toward the east side of it is, you know, just the prime irrigated land, so I would, I would like to see any building pushed over to the west of that so that it, you know, that agricultural land would be preserved. You know, when we bought our place, part of the reason we bought here was because of the agricultural nature of the property and of Delta County and, you know, we would, we would really like to see that preserved. And, um, one solution, one solution could be to combine lots two and three and make a two lot split and put the access maybe further up the hill or even on the current access. And that would, you know, address the, the irrigation problems and the, you know, kind of, kind of all of it. And, you know, if that is possible, then I really would like to see, you know, the wetlands considered, the irrigation considered, the light and noise pollution, you know, we really like having a field in our view plain and the birds and the, you know, just kind of the peace and quiet that, that makes that neighborhood such a desirable place to live. So in that spirit, I would, I would, um, like, like for you to attach some conditions to any approval of this application so that the, uh, the concerns of the neighbors are also addressed in, in this process. Thank you for your time.
Hey, I had a question for you.
Okay.
Yeah, you mentioned an irrigation pipe underneath the shared access area.
Okay, the way the irrigation works is it comes across the road just below the house on lot one. And then it, there's a pipe that runs across and that top part of the field really rarely gets irrigated, it's, you know, it's a gravity feed system and it's a top, so it's hard to use. But from there, there's a buried pipe that comes all the way down to a box just onto the corner of of our, our property and then actually into lot three is where it splits off to the Gillan Waters. And then, and so the, the proposed access goes right over that. And also where the lateral pipe comes off that would irrigate, that irrigates what's lot three, I think from walking it off, that, that access would be right where all the, the valves and everything occur. And as I said, this, this irrigation system is shared by all three properties, benefits all three properties, we, everybody gets the full twenty-five shares when it's their turn because that's the most practical way to, to really run the irrigation system.
Okay, and is that written in a document or?
No, that's just been a longstanding gentleman's agreement that started with Ray Rhodes, who owned the property before. And, uh, Larry Gillanwater actually installed a lot of the system. And so, no, there is no actual written document, it's just a a handshake agreement, basically.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Steve Danoff, I live, uh, one one five eight nine Crawford Road with K, uh, just north of the subject property. Uh, I have actually begun writing a, uh, proposed set of rules for the property with more and more people and new people joining in, it seemed like maybe something did need to be in writing. And so I don't have that with me now, it didn't seem appropriate, and I still need to talk to the other shareholders and make sure it's good with everybody, but it is mostly just to say that it is a shared system, everybody is responsible for making sure the water goes to who it's supposed to go to when it's supposed to be there. It shouldn't have to be in writing, but maybe by now it does. And I don't know what, um, And I don't know what um remediation or how we could deal with it not going like it's supposed to.
You do realize Delta County does not get involved in irrigation agreements?
Uh, I understand and that's just, that's excellent, but I believe it should be discussed perhaps before this is all approved. It's, I mean, to me, the water is the most important issue and there's three, actually three water issues. That would, that I would like to talk about. I also sent in a letter that had a list of what I wanted to talk about. And so um. If I could read the details of that to you, I'd like to do that. And I understand that the land trust wants to sell some of its land to raise money. It feels like maybe that well was installed for this purpose when the entire acreage made it acceptable. And now it's being split off. So I feel like that was maybe um. Part of a speculation move from the beginning to sell some property off, which is okay. He can sell property off. But I believe uh, that what happens after the sale has not really been addressed. And there's a lot of issues that are just, we sell the land and then we're done with it. And and it's, it seems like it should be more of a neighborhood thing than that. I think that the land split can be done for better for everybody. The water issues, the wetlands, the irrigation and the domestic water. All, all speak to me right off the plat as issues. The wetlands, I think, needs to be protected. I think it's basically a head water. Water starts right there. And goes down through some other properties and off to the river. This is for everybody else in America to get that water. So I think the wetlands needs to be respected and protected for downstream users and for the spot itself. I don't know exactly what protection rules look like. I know there are some for wetlands and if I could.
State of Colorado has primacy on that.
State of Colorado, I understand that. And I don't, and I believe someone's been there to look at it and said, yes, it is indeed a wetland. I would like to add to that on the plat, if it's possible, that no vehicle should be driven in that wetland. Except maybe for agricultural safety emergency purposes. I think vehicles should be kept out of that water. And so I'd also like to see, because of how it is. It's a low, a low wetland in a, in the bottom of a giant agricultural field. And so if someone's going to build on that lot, I would like to see, you know, the engineering for a septic system. That really protects that area. And I'm not sure about the, how the, how the setbacks would go, but with a fifty-foot right of way setback. Would a house setback be fifty feet from that because of the possibility of that being built? So something would be built a hundred feet back from the road at minimum. And there, that well that's there is a hundred and fifty feet from the road, so the house would be right above the well. Which leads me to believe the septic system would have to be below the well. Which would put it getting pretty close to that wetlands. So part of, I believe, when we were talking about building envelopes with the uh, planning commission. Was to protect that wetland from that very kind of situation. And so that was one reason why the, the house envelopes were moved to the, to towards the back of that property. To protect that wetland, make that all easier. And also to protect all the neighbors' view planes. Every, every neighbor around looks right down in there, including them. They also said they didn't want to look at other houses in their view plane. And so they actually agreed to the envelopes at one time. Also, building heights were mentioned, but um, that's probably out of this purview too. But I think it would be a shame to build anything on the proposed lot three that is. Very, very agricultural. It's very, very wet when it's irrigated. Uh, I read that it wasn't considered prime agriculture and um. At least it's a very, very good agricultural land. It hadn't been watered or used or taken care of for over three years. It sat totally fallow. And then when the neighbor came and uh, brought cattle and did hay and irrigated. It popped. It was ready to go. It sustained cattle. It sustained quite an excellent hay crop. And that was just with first year watering. When that guy came and watered, he had questions about the system. I was there to help him because I understand how that whole system works. The way that system works is entirety of lot three is irrigated really, really well, end to end. Some of that water gets to the very end of lot two because that it's at the end of lot three piping. Lot one receives very little, as Kay said. It's at the top of the line. Only at the highest water in the beginning of the year does lot one get any water at all. And you can see that that hillside is dry and in fact. Some green stuff has been added to that hillside recently to make it look greener, I guess. I don't know. But the field itself and the wetlands showed their strength because neither of them had been watered for decades. I'm sorry, for years, for years. And so when they went to first drill that well, they moved their well truck, digging truck into the wetlands. And it sunk and they had a very hard time getting it out. So that is definitely a water source. The field itself showed its strength for coming back really well after not being taken care of. That whole irrigation system is gravity based. It comes in at the top and spreads out over the land. Mine does the same thing. All that irrigation system is totally gravity based from the very top of the source. It's been working like that for years. It's kind of a simple system and it's pretty complex at the same time. There's lots of valves. There's lots of things that move water around. It's been working fine for years and it's been shared among the neighbors for years. There was a blowout in the underground pipe a few years ago. Uh, and that was right about where the proposed driveway is looking at right now. That is uh, what's been called a fifty-pound crush weight pipe. Which at the time, you know, many, many years ago was adequate for for the use. I'm not sure exactly how deep it is. It varies in places. But I don't, also don't think, I don't think it would even take the um, compacting that it would take to build. That driveway in that place. That has to be a pretty nice driveway. That driveway is positioned directly below the main irrigation pipe for lot three. I, I don't see how that could even be feasible. I mean, that's.
Sir, again, the county does not, Delta County does not get involved in irrigation systems. We just want to make sure that there's adequate water for each of the splits.
Okay.
That's a private property right that's between the ditch company and the landowners.
So, well, I'm not worried about that as much as the position of that driveway being. Below water source. I mean, it seems, seems like a, not the correct place to. I mean, you can't really move the water pipes. It's all gravity based. You could.
So by the road standards, that is the location. It meets, that access was chosen because that meets the road standards. The offset for driveways.
I understand that. Yeah, yeah, I understand that. And that would be fine if it wasn't right on, you know. In the most agricultural part of that property. I'm not saying it shouldn't be there. But I'm saying it doesn't work with the water system that's existing. Whoever buys lot three is going to have to. Deal with the irrigation water coming over their driveway or moving that whole system and. I don't see moving it because it's gravity based and it does what it does because it is where it is. I, there's, there's probably another scenario for the driveway that I would like to discuss in a moment. But it is, not only is it below the driveway, it also, uh, the driveway below the pipes. It also covers a couple pipes and possibly even some valves that are all there, which. I think it needs to be remediated before that driveway is ever built. And I'm not sure, does that driveway need to be built before this final plat can go through? Is that necessary? So um. So I, I have a hard time seeing how this problem will be resolved when that occurs. Because it won't be a county thing. I just see that as as unworkable personally. And I know it's irrigation, but it is water and it is on a driveway. It's on a road that's been approved. The driveway.
The location is approved.
Is approved.
You have to go through a process to actually build the access, which will be inspected by the county.
And so will, will that take into account the water that's right above it coming across it?
We can look at the irrigation system and make sure that it works. I mean. Correct? If, I mean, if the, if the road access is supposed to cross that, we don't want to create an access. That's going to prevent that irrigation system from working.
Correct. But that is, that is the landowners and the.
Correct.
Water companies issue irrigation.
Do you have a couple other things? We have some other.
I do. I have quite a few other things, but I believe that needs to be taken care of either on a plat or on a piece of paper somewhere. It needs to be written that this needs to be taken care of. If that irrigation doesn't, I mean, all right, I'm going to move off in the irrigation since that really doesn't. Have anything to do with you guys. Other than. So far, everything has worked up there as a gentleman's handshake agreement. We haven't had to write anything. If there's been a problem, we all fixed it together. We do the maintenance. We take care of all that that's going on. There was some misinformation perhaps. Uh, it's not part of the Minnesota ditch. It's part of the Minnesota ditch extension.
That's been combined.
It's been combined. Uh, also, the Stewart ditch was mentioned and it has nothing to do with, that's a very, very old.
That's been taken on.
Right of way. That's not even there anymore. The shares are divided. They are split. Everybody gets the twenty-five shares during their time. The time is split right now with Gillan water getting six days, the Realty Trust getting six days. And Hannah, my property getting three days. We do split that into two and one days on either side of the six-day operations.
Okay, sir, again, that's private to you guys.
That is private to us, but.
But that's not a county, that's overreaching by county to get involved in that.
There seemed to be some misconceptions about all that and I wanted to be clear. Back in the planning department, they said they wanted to make sure all the twenty-five shares were going to everybody and they already do. I just wanted to be clear with that. We also wanted to be clear that the shares were on that property divided by them and has nothing to do with the other properties. Any other problems that have happened with that, with all of that have been dealt by word of mouth. I have some maps that I added to, if you guys would like to see where the irrigation uh, lines are all over the property. And how that interferes with, so can I come up there?
Yeah. Add it to Lindsay. Thank you.
Thank you. So um. The other place that. The um. Irrigation has a big issue is that the proposed right of way is entirely over all the pipes on the roadside edge there. There's pipes on top, there's pipes underneath, there's pipes turning around and going back uphill. There's at least four or five different valves and boxes in that area. So if that right of way was ever used, it would take an incredible amount of work on apparently the owner's part.
Be up to the owners. Is there anything else besides the water?
Yeah. I have a question about lot one and if that one needs to be brought up to code if this subdivision goes through as applied for. I know the buildings on two and three will have to be to code. Does the buildings on lot one need to be brought to code to make this work?
We don't have a building code in Delta County.
Well, there's lighting, things and stuff like that. And that's what I'm concerned with is, you know.
Yeah, they would have to be.
That's what I'm asking. So.
I don't understand your question.
My question is if the lot one has to have the same. Uh, applied codes as lots two and three. And basically. I'm basically concerned with the lighting. There is a light, or at least there used to be a light that shined from their property onto our property. I could see it. And any other things, I don't know. That also on lot one is the water for lot two. So does that mean that the owners of lot two will eventually have to own that spring? Is that how that works, the domestic water? Which, by the way, has to come four hundred and eighty feet just to get to the property line.
Go ahead, Sean.
He's talking, oops, I'm sorry. He's talking about where the star is located.
The star is located.
Yeah, I see that on the plat.
Right.
Easement that goes from lot one to lot two.
So that's an easement. So does that guarantee that water to those people in perpetuity? I don't understand how.
That's what an easement does, yes.
That's what I mean. So they, so people on lot two would own road springs number three.
They would have an easement.
Easement is not ownership.
So.
It's a right to use.
They, so they don't own it.
So lot two does not own the ground. They have a right to use. So the easements are usually like.
Twenty feet. So he can cut a ditch.
They can use that. They don't, the lot two owner doesn't own it. It's a right to use.
They don't own the land. They don't own the spring.
I believe that's correct.
That doesn't really seem right to me somehow.
But in the stipulations, the lot two has, I've read them, lot two has the right to use road spring number three.
The right to use.
It's in the, it's in the.
And that's in perpetuity. That's they basically, so they don't own it, but they have the right to use it.
Yes.
Okay.
We need to get moving on.
All right, I have, okay. So here's the deal. I don't want to see the pipe get crushed. Uh, I saw that there was a traffic study. I don't know if you just do road count or anything, but that driveway is in a horrible location between two blind hills. Forty-five mile an hour speed limit that people exceed a lot. And people pass other people illegally right at that hillside, right in front of that driveway site. A lot. Passing illegally happens there. Scary. He was almost head on not that long ago. I don't think that this plat should be um. Allowed as it is. It causes a whole lot of problems that I don't feel have been dealt with. And uh, the way I see it, those two lots should be combined. Lot three is supremely agricultural. Lot two is a beautiful building site. The two would work much better together as one. The money can't be that much different. There would be no right of way issue. That'd give them an extra acre and something to sell. I would, if I was them, I would sell off all of the irrigation water to the other lots. It would get rid of the irrigation issues, the water source issues, the driveway issue, all kinds of details. If this was a two lot split instead of a three lot split, so I don't think it should go through as, as it sits right now.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else that would like to address the board? No? Nobody on the computer neither? Okay. Mister Kritan, you have anything else you would like to?
Yeah, just had a few things. So as far as the water, obviously, as you mentioned, the Delta County, we have a responsibility on the paper that we. So as far as the water, obviously, as you mentioned, the Delta County, we have a responsibility on the paper that we wrote. Feel addresses pretty much all these concerns and um, yeah, uh, just trying to, hold on one second, just to save our time. I feel like we addressed everything pretty well. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want to get into specifics or anything. Obviously, the white elephant or the elephant in the room is neighbors don't want a house next to them and kind of like, you know, I feel that we've met the, the land use code and kept the lots into the agricultural integrity that brings in as far as like us considering combining lots, that's not in question for us. That, you know, we meet the standard for land use code, the water. And obviously, if anything is damaged in that process, we actually get hurt the most, me and Tessa, because the water has to back up the pipe. Uh, it doesn't have to flow. I'm not going to get into irrigation here, but uh, yeah. A-anything that they said, I feel we addressed in, in our written document.
Thank you. Anything more from the planning department or engineering?
Questions for staff. Tim, you said the driveway access meets all standards. Is that correct?
That location for the proposed lots, that's the, meets the offset distance that are stitched in the stand, road standards.
Okay.
The board can approve a different location if you'd like. That's, that's your ability. I mean, if you would like to move it somewhere else, you could. The only other place being north, or yes, north to the north corner of lot one. The problem is then it wouldn't meet the standards because there's driveways north of there. So that's the reason that is the location. But if you guys feel like it needs to be in a different location, you have the authority to do that.
Sean or Brittany, has there been an OWTS application for lot two or three?
No, because they're not proposing to build. They're just going to sell the land as vacant residential.
Would would there be able to be an engineered design for lot two and three for an OWTS that meets the state standards?
It would be required to meet standards and it'd be required to be engineered. So whether or not that's possible to achieve, I, I couldn't judge that. And that would be a requirement that environmental health would review and have to approve.
And for everyone's information, uh, Delta County adheres to the state of Colorado standards for onsite wastewater treatment. Including gray water.
And we don't know what year whoever buys the other two lots are going to build. So we can't hold up the process because it may be one month, might be ten years before they build. Who knows? On that and you know, lot three is primary agriculture, probably a nice, pretty field right there. But is it the neighbor's right or this board's right to say you can't build a house on prime ag property if that's where the wife wants it? You know, uh, the house that I was raised in was built in nineteen fifty. There was no houses there before. But they built it. The house I currently live in is built in nineteen forty-seven, wasn't a house there before. And we, they have a right to subdivide even though the neighbors had moved there for the view, for the aesthetics, for no traffic or whatever. But every house that everybody lives in has been subdivided, split off, built from somebody else's property. So we can't really look at it like that, that we're going to stop it now because we don't have the right to do that. Thank you for everybody's comments on this. We note also all of the conditions that have to be met. Again, irrigation water is not part of the county's business. And hopefully the gentleman's agreement will continue. But water is for fighting and whiskey's for drinking, you know, that's what they say.
Mike, we do have a question about uh, stipulation number eleven, the building envelopes. Would staff like to speak to those, please?
Basically, it's not a, it's not a requirement. I mean, the wetlands will be delineated on the final plat. And there are setback requirements for wetlands in the land use code. And so the, the, the right to be able to build wherever that they meet the setback requirements. So it seemed like an extra condition that was put upon is justified by land use code.
And we have a reservation on this one?
Yeah. Is that twenty-five?
Twenty-five, I have twenty, oh, twenty-five.
Are you ready? I'm going to move the board to approve and authorize signature by, by the chairman. Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-four R twenty-five. Resolution conditionally approving a preliminary plat for project number twenty-four zero two six Creatini to subdivide thirty-six acres into three lots in the eight twenty zoning district located on the west side of Crawford Road, Peonia, parcel number three two four three two four three zero 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 one two. And delete the condition of approval number eleven regarding building envelopes.
I'll step down in second time. Most in second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. You guys can hang out and we can do it down later in the next steps or I can call you later.
Okay.
Totally do.
Thank you.
Can we have one more from planning?
One more and then we'll be done.
We take five minutes?
Any good for you, Winkle?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, after the brief recess, welcome back to the planning department. And we have one more item for them to address.
Okay. Uh, the next project we have um, is project number twenty-four dash zero five seven Davis. This is for consideration of an amendment to the GW for family minor subdivision and removal of plat note number eight of the GW's for family minor. So this project is for a limited use permit with notice for any venue. Uh, the parcel consists of nineteen point three nine acres and has been zoned A twenty per the two thousand twenty-four land use code. In review of this application, staff discovered that the subject parcel had two recorded plaques. One being um, GW sport family minor sub, the other sports for boundary line adjustment. In review of these plaques, staff determined that there was a plat restriction located on the GW family minor subdivision plat that would restrict Mr. Davis from any further development on the parcel. In review of the spores for boundary line adjustment, staff discovered that no plat notes listed from the previous minor subdivision was not located or indicated on the plat. Staff contacted the county surveyor to get clarification regarding the minor plat and the boundary line adjustment. And what was the process needed to correct these issues? The county surveyor indicated that a, an amendment plat when needed would be needed to be done to add the plat restriction notes to the plat as these restrictions are still in place. And that the boundary line adjustment should have been processed as a replat instead. So here is the minor plat. In the pink, you'll see the plat restriction number eight that states all lots within the subdivision have been approved for one single family dwelling, including mobile homes if not otherwise restricted. And any further development on any lot would require purchase of an additional water tap, septic system and utilities to be constructed upon each lot. And said restriction must be removed by formal action of the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, the owners have an approval letter from the Rogers Mesa Domestic Water Company and an application in for OWTS with environmental help. Here you'll see the boundary line adjustment. Um, it's kind of hard to see, but there is no plat restrictions added to this plat. So as such, um, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners accept the amended plat for the JW for family minor subdivision and S, uh, sorry, number O six dash zero zero one. And remove plat note number eight from the amended replat of the GW sport family minor subdivision and S O six dash zero zero one and authorize the chair to sign the final plat. And that concludes my presentation and the Davises are here.
Okay. Anything else you would like to say about this?
It really sounds like she covered it very well.
Uh, when was the restriction put in? In two thousand and six?
Yes.
That's from the big restrictions, perpetuity's long time. Yes, it is.
And uh, I'm sure in two thousand and six, when it was noted whoever put the restriction on that plat uh, wanted it there so the property wouldn't be developed in the future.
Their lot was actually very small in that first subdivision plat. It was maybe, that was two point eight acres. So then when the boundary line adjustment came along that was supposed to be done as a replat, their parcel went from two acres to almost twenty acres. So um, they probably didn't have much room to develop further on that two acre parcel.
Well, but you also got to consider the uh, the mentality at the time. There was a lot of growth in the county. Two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, it was going crazy. And the mentality of the planning department at that time was to, to slow growth. So, you know, we've, we've come across a lot of these in my last eight years here that you know, that, the planning, planning department at that time, that was, that was what they put into about everything. I was with Orchard City during this time and I can tell you anything that was near jurisdiction, they were, they were doing everything they could to, to slow it or, or shut it down or whatever. So I'm, I'm not surprised by this, this plat note coming from the, the planning commission or the planning department at that time. So.
And you know, they probably had public meetings back then. The neighbors, uh, just like the previous neighbors were concerned about growth, so they put that restriction on there.
And knowing the, knowing the directors at the time, I imagine it was, it was more of a staff direction than necessarily public comment is what I would bet. Okay, I'm going to move the board to accept the amended replat of the GW support family minor subdivision, MS number zero six zero zero one. And remove plat note number eight from the amended replat of the same uh, subdivision and authorize chair to sign the final. I'll second that.
Motion in second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Convince me that I should vote for this.
Please?
Because we got the restriction on there.
The restriction. You know, we you uh, if you're going to limit every property out there from future development, this county will die. There will be no growth.
Right. But then we're talking about a restriction on this one.
Right, right. And there are, there are tons of those out there with restrictions. We have personally, this board has removed restriction, restrictions several times that planning commission wanted placed on plats. We have a precedent of removing these, these restrictions. You, we have allowed restrictions with timeframes, you know, a ten year or a twenty year restriction. But a restriction in perpetuity, this board has a precedent of not approving restrictions in perpetuity. And the replat creates a lot of twenty acres, nineteen. Right. Yeah, it, I mean, it, it, it's not like it made a, a, a small lot with, with no developable.
Can I, can I also?
But we are not putting a restriction on.
We're removing the.
Yeah. So this, I agree. I don't agree with restrictions, but we've got one here. This is already on there, putting on, putting on by some person.
Well.
Or the planning board.
I, I would hope that in twenty eighteen years from now, if I made a bad decision sitting in this chair, that a future board would be willing to correct that decision. I will never admit to being imperfect when it comes to land use decisions.
Any further discussion?
No, if I had eighteen acres, I'd be looking to do the same thing. That's private property right that got restricted. Not out of a land use code logic, but out of emotion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Sorry it took us so long to get here. Mister Supus is fond of saying land use is our least favorite thing to work on and it's true.
Anything more from the planning department? Okay, thank you very much. I have one more share report to read for Sunday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Male inmates county jail thirty-three, female inmates county jail eight. Male inmates department of corrections four, female inmates department corrections one. Total of forty-six, average daily inmate population for the week of ten fourteen twenty-four through ten twenty twenty-four was fifty-one point fifty-seven. There's nothing else to become before the board that will stand adjourned. Thank you.